All right, let's call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Niarodowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenly. Trustee Dante.
Present.
Supervisor Bussi.
Present. I guess we have two of our trustees here are gone due to spring break. But we have a quorum, so we can continue. Is there any public comment? Nope, okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for the authorization of payroll bills and my report?
So moved. Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Right.
Do you want to do a roll call vote on that since it's?
Oh, honey.
All right, I'll do a roll call on that. Roll call.
Trustee Niarodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi.
Aye. Okay, discussion on the, and approval of the minutes. This is February 27th, 2023, which was the public hearing for the tentative budget and the, for the tentative budgets Town Fund Social Services Sewer and Road Department. And then February 27th, 2023, for the regular board meeting. Are there any, well, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any questions or any issues with any of those for the clerk?
No, sir.
No.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Niarodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Dante.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi.
Aye. All right, we have a presentation tonight. Luanne Pross, our Director of the Adult and Family Counseling Department, will kind of give her annual review here. As you know, we have each of the departments come in to, just to make sure we stay, that the board stays current with what's going on in each department, so. Luanne?
Great, thank you for having me. This is actually my first, first time before the board, so I'm a little bit nervous. But again, thank you for having me. I'd just like to review the township mission. It's the mission of Elk Grove Township to empower individuals and their families by providing services to enhance the lives of its residents. By collaborating with our community partners, we provide for the health, safety, and general welfare of all township citizens in need. In recognizing our fiduciary responsibility to our taxpayers, we ensure all programs and services are evaluated and provided in the most fiscally responsible manner. Elk Grove Township strengthens the community by providing both short and long-term needs. Our core services are social services, residential property, taxpayer advocacy, and highway maintenance. So I just want to kind of review how the Adult and Family Counseling Program fits in with the mission of the township. We fall under the core service of the Social Services Department, providing for the health, safety, and general well-being of township residents. Mental health is an integral part of overall health in general. And counseling services empower or make confident individuals and families to enhance overall well-being. The services we provide in the Adult and Family Counseling Program are intake, assessment, counseling, referral, case management, screening, mainly ADHD screenings, consultation and crisis response for the community, and community networking. My understanding is the program has been in existence in the mid-'70s. And actually, I kind of remember the program from the mid-'70s, over that little house on a Gulf and Mount Prospect Road driving past there. At that time, the program was combined with the Youth Service Program. And in recent years, it's since been separated. Similar programs exist in nearby Bloomingdale, Hanover, and Maine Townships with distinct counseling programs. Palatine, Schaumburg, and Wheeling Fund counseling programs that are administered in a different way. But those programs as well are distinct from the state-funded community mental health centers like Kenneth Young, even like the Jocelyn, even like the Alexian Brothers Mental Health Center. So all the townships are offering like alternative counseling services to, from those state agencies. This has been, I would say, a great time of transition. I've been on board since October of 2021, when I was originally hired by Dean. And at that time, Dean was kind of part-time. He had left in January. In April of 2022, I modified the Jocelyn contract. Just needed some tweaking. And then we started implementing the telehealth psychiatric services in April of 2022. In June of '22, I hired a full-time staff in anticipation of Robin's retirement in July of 2022. In September, we implemented updated ADHD screens with more current software. I recruited part-time Spanish-speaking staff. And by February, a couple months ago, Karina has been fully onboarded. Then recently, I was approved for an additional full-time staff member in response to increased need and demand. So since, I've been keeping pretty good statistics for the past year in terms of the calls coming in. So since March of 2022 to this year, we've had 150 intake calls. Thirty-four percent required Spanish-speaking therapist only. And that's mainly because the parents only speak Spanish. So 65% of the calls were for people under the age of 18. Thirty-five percent were adults. So of those 150 intake calls, 83% became actual program clients. We've experienced a tremendous amount of growth, adding an additional staff and a half. In October of '21, for that month, there were 68 counseling sessions completed. In February, there were 99. In October, 134. And just last February, 175 counseling sessions completed within that month. We always anticipate, you know, some level of cancellation and, but I think that's a pretty good growth indication. So these are referral sources. I've been keeping like really good stats and kind of, kind of combining, you know, the major referral sources. District 59 is by far our top. Returning our transfer clients means either clients that were transferred from Dean or Robin to, to the existing staff, or they were their clients in the past and they needed to come back. So friend, relative, other clients, District 214, other social service agencies, the newsletter, we get a fair amount of referrals. Other township programs, social service and youth. The Village of Mount Prospect, Village of Elk Grove, those include the police departments. And just general knowledge, sometimes I ask people, "How do you know about us?" "Oh, we just know about you." And they can't really pinpoint it. And then also local newspaper articles recently have been bringing in a lot of referrals. So in terms of the adults reasons, at intake, when we ask, you know, what is the reason you're seeking services? You could see kind of the overall patterns of adjustment, anxiety, caregiving, conflicts with adult children, coping with their own health problems or loss, depression, domestic violence, family substance abuse, grief, intrusive thinking or thoughts, isolation, job performance, parenting transgender children, just parenting skills in general, relationship conflicts, and the consequences of prior trauma. For youth, adolescents, and children, these were the primary reasons for seeking services. Adjustment to divorce, life changes, loss, illness, aggression, anger, anxiety, behavioral problems, weapons, bullying, depression, eating disorders, elimination problems, family violence, intrusive thinking, self-esteem, perfectionism, selective mutism, school performance, substance abuse, thoughts of suicide, sexual abuse, trauma, shooting, and violence. Being witnesses of. So essentially, the services we provide are intake and screening. So we get a phone call and typically I will do an intake for the English speakers and Carmen will do intake for the Spanish speakers only. And then we have a form and, you know, we kind of get standard information. And if we think we're in the ballpark that we can help, then we certainly, you know, take people on as our clients. If not, then we refer, you know, to some other more appropriate agency or since we are now running a pretty significant waitlist. You know, I always tell people, "Well, we'll put you on our waitlist, but let me see, let's see what your other options are." And you can get out other waitlists as well as, since, you know, while you're waiting for us. So that, that kind of works. And then by the time we call them back, either, you know, they have found other services or they haven't, so they continue with our program. So the counseling services and psychotherapy, I guess I consider psychotherapy a little bit more intense than general counseling services. That's why I separated the two, so we provide that. The ADHD screen, sometimes we do them, actually most times, upon the request of the school. The schools have requested the parents call us for an ADHD screen for suspected ADHD or some other kind of problems. It's really nice because the updated software that we started utilizing this year, it could screen for other problems too, like depression, like learning problems, like anxiety, like even autism. So if it's not clearly ADD in our reports, we can kind of say, "Well, you know, it could be like a learning disability." So we write reports for the parents, of course, and the schools, and recommend any kind of educational accommodations that would be helpful for the child. So many of those are standalone, others become clients. If we, and others just want both, the screening and they want, you know, counseling services. We offer parent skills training, referral and case management. So for example, with the Jocelyn Center, they provide the tele psychiatric services, but they do require that we keep on that client as one of our patients. So they're not taking like full responsibility for the case. We're still the therapist. And then we consult with them back and forth about that particular client. They can access the psychiatric provider by Zoom. And if, as people get better, and they really do, and some of these medications have made a world of difference, then we start to kind of reduce our involvement. Instead of maybe meeting with them weekly, you know, we'll meet every other week, all the way down to even once a month for a half an hour, just to check in and say, "How are things going with the Jocelyn Center? Are you, you know, happy with their services? How are you doing? How are your symptoms?" So we, we start to taper down. So the Jocelyn Center, they started about a year ago. About 11 months ago, actually seeing our clients. Nineteen clients have been seen since we started, 14 youth, and the rest were adults. What we do is when we meet with a family and, and the, and the child or adult, we kind of determine at that time through an assessment process whether or not we think medication would be helpful for them. And if so, then we link them up with Jocelyn right away. Sometimes though, that may not happen for, you know, a month or two down, you know, into treatment. When we find that, you know, treatment isn't quite enough, that they may need a medication, then we'll refer at that time to the Jocelyn Center. So we'll fill out all the paperwork, kind of send it over to them. Then they do an additional screening. And then they set up an appointment with a psychiatrist from there and follow-up appointments, you know, once a month is the, the client gets better. It can go down to once every three months with the Jocelyn Center. They've been really good in terms of, I think originally kind of the agreement was, you know, if someone had a copay, you know, if they were covered by insurance or deductible, that they would be responsible for that. But we kind of reworked that and now they're, they're just picking up the whole cost. So residents don't have to pay anything out of pocket except for their medications. They do, they do need to cover their medications, of course. The medications, they prescribe pretty conservatively. So they're antidepressants and non-habit-forming anti-anxiety medications, which is good because they're not going to get the kids addicted to anything or any of the adults either. So for this coming year, what my goals are, are to kind of review, review and revise program operations in general in terms of putting together some kind of policy and, you know, procedure manual. We have policies and procedures, but I'd like to tighten them up and review them with the current standards and best practices. Bring on additional staff to reduce the waitlist, increase clinical staff development. Currently, I do spend an hour with each of them every week in supervision and we review all their cases, except for the part-timer because she, she only has six cases and she's, she's pretty independent. But I meet with her periodically, not necessarily weekly. But I'd, I'd really like to like increase kind of time with them and my ability to kind of really oversee and provide oversight. And then the other goal I have is to, to develop some kind of tracking tool or like client satisfaction survey or something that, like that. So we can, you know, clearly measure the effectiveness of our services. Any questions? Yes.
Clearly, you've done your homework, so nice job.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the information that you've provided. On the growth side, I can see your numbers. Do you, what can you attribute to the uptick between October and February?
I think we've done a lot of, we have a lot more exposure in the community. I think some of the newsletter articles have hit home. I think we've, we've gone out there, we've gone to community networking events. And I think people just know about us more. Some of the, the articles in the local papers have made us more well-known. We, every year, we meet with the school social workers. We went to Elk Grove High School, we went to, you know, actually, they came here, the District 59 folks. So I think just an increased exposure. And, and people seem just to know about us more for some reason. And I also think the Jocelyn Center services have, have kind of brought some folks in. Although it's, there's only been a couple of clients who've come in like just wanting that service. They can't just have that service anyway because it's not responsible. But I mean, there just been a couple of clients who just say, "I want medication. I don't want counseling." I say, "Well, that's, that's not us." Not us.
Okay, I mean, that kind of goes back to what you've been saying.
Yeah.
If you only know about the services if you need them.
Absolutely.
So I, I thank you for answering that. And the, the adults reasons at intake for seeking help, you, you have them all nicely listed. Are, are these in, in, in the order that you see?
No, I think we put them in alphabetical order. I, I don't have percentages, but I think.
I'm not, I guess it's not a percentage type thing. I guess I'm just looking for, you know, out of, out of all of these, what's the more common denominator you get out of all of this?
A lot of it is, is adjustment to failing health or, or, you know, functioning that's decreasing.
So that's the adjustment to life changes?
Yeah. I would say that's the overall, and just having a hard time coping with that. A lot of clients in general, adults and kids, are just faced with all kinds of like financial burdens and stressors and problems. So I mean, we, we try to get them along to other agencies or not other agencies and internally that can help. The food pantry has been like a blessing. I can't tell you how many people I've kind of brought over to the food pantry and then they've signed up for services because it just, just helps. Everyone's saying the rents are going up. They can't afford it. There's, you know, some parents are working two jobs. And it's, it's kind of really hard to be a parent when you have, you know, kids unsupervised for that long of a time period.
Well, I mean, I can, I can, I can definitely understand that. It appears to me that over the last, I don't know, probably five, six years, what's happened to the housing market with increases has happened to rent. And people's rental amounts are equal to somebody's mortgage a month. So I, I, I can understand that. Jumping over to the Adult and Family Counseling Program interventions, what exactly falls under the psychotherapy?
Psychotherapy, when someone is, you know, like intensely depressed, kind of suicidal, but not, or just very anxious. They don't want to leave the house, they kind of react with anxiety. We provide intensive psychotherapy. If that's once a week, it's once a week, or maybe once a week and a phone call. So that's, that's what I consider psychotherapy. And as people get better and they can and they do get better, then we start to taper down on the frequency of sessions. And a lot of those folks need the, the Jocelyn services. We have people who say they think about, you know, harming themselves, but they're not going to actually do that. So you can't actually hospitalized them like involuntarily in a, in a case like that. So we, we just keep a very close, close eye on them. And then we get some, some people who, a lot of kids, who there's some kind of crisis in school and they end up getting hospitalized. They're already our clients. And then they come back to us and we're the, the provider of choice. There's no one else that they can go to. So we monitor them very, very closely.
Okay, and then my last question is on your referral sources. I know from the last meeting we had here where we had the school districts in, and I forget exactly what.
ITech was it?
ITech, is that what it was called?
ITech.
ITech, yeah.
ITech.
I had the privilege of sitting with a police officer and a social worker that works specifically for the, the police department. So are you getting referrals? It says Elk Grove Village. I'm assuming that's the municipality side, not necessarily the police department themselves?
It's, it's the police department.
Okay.
It's the police department.
Okay.
And from, from Mount Prospect, we get both. Some police department referrals and municipality referrals. But yeah, right now with, with Elk Grove, it is just the police department. So we have, we have a lot of, you know, we have several cases that, you know, they've gotten to the attention of the police, not, you know, enough for like their police social worker to follow up. I mean, they're kind of, I don't know if you want to, you know, say that they didn't get ticketed, but, but it's certainly an issue, so then they'll refer to us.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I got a question.
Yes.
What percentages Kenneth Young are you using for a vendor or partner, I should say?
What I hear often on intake is people calling and saying, "We're already on the waitlist for Kenneth Young. We've been on the waitlist for, you know, four months. And then we learned about your program and we want, you know, we want your services as well. Hopefully you could get it." At this point, it's almost like who could get in quicker? Who could, who could pick up the client quicker? Us, Kenneth Young, even private practitioners have wait lists right now. They can't, they can't even call their insurance and get an appointment, depending on the insurance company. And that's especially true with children and adolescents. Adults can usually, I don't know, you know, get picked up quicker. But a lot of therapists are hesitant to work with children and adolescents, so the waitlists tend to be longer. Currently, we have 16 on our waitlist. There are five Spanish-speaking only. I'm sorry, we have 21. And 16 English-speaking. It's the highest.
Waitlist going up or is it kind of steady?
Oh, that's, that's going up. I still, I have two more calls I have to return tomorrow for English speaking. There has always been a Spanish-speaking waitlist. I think hiring, you know, the part-timer really kind of helped with that. But for some reason, it seems like since January, the English-speaking waitlist is really rising.
Would you consider hiring more employees?
Yes. Yes, it's.
We actually, she's actually looking to hire another therapist right now. And we're looking at using a temp agency because it's hard to find therapists. A temp agency where we, we would have them for a period of time and she could observe whether this is somebody that we'd then like to bring on full-time. So it's, it would be a win-win. It help, we have a larger organization looking and finding potential therapists. And then we'd have time to, Luanne would have time to, to analyze or, and watch them and make a decision whether this is somebody we want to hire full-time. So we're adding another, another therapist. I know she'd like to have Spanish speaking. And as long as this grows and the demand continues to grow, this is an area, as I've said in the past, social services, adult and family counseling, food pantry, youth services, these are the areas where the growth is going to be. And we are the, we are the provider with, with the greatest capabilities and competency. And we need to meet that demand. So far, we've been able to do it without raising taxes because, because we've been very, very judicious in how we spend our money. And I think once this capital improvement program is done, we'll have, we'll be building our reserves up again. It will give us more thought, more ammunition for being able to continue to expand those services because we see them, we just see them growing.
I had a couple of questions in, in terms of the 150 intake calls. Do those, and then you said 124 become program clients. Is the remaining 26, is that we refer somewhere else? Or, or does this not include referrals or what do we?
It doesn't, it's more likely that by the time we call them back, they've found services elsewhere, they've changed their minds.
Okay. And who do we, who is our primary referral? What is the organization's agencies that we refer to the most?
Well, we do Kenneth Young. I tell a lot of people to go through their private insurance for counseling programs, some of the domestic violence agencies, but then they all have waitlists too. I get, I get calls saying that they're already on the waitlist for, for wings or lifespan.
Wings is a waiting list too?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, and.
So, so virtually all these organizations, Wings, Shelter, Kenneth Young, they all have waiting lists for being able to take them on as clients?
Yes, they all have waiting lists.
So the referrals, what you were saying with referrals is that if, if we're full and there's a specific need, or if there's a specific need that we can't address, you'll refer them there, but they're going to, they're going to get on the list. And, and you encourage them to get on as multiple, as many lists as they can?
I do because I don't like to see people waiting, especially when I, you know, I'm on some of these calls and I hear the issues and I think, "You're going to wait on a waiting list." And it's, it's difficult for me. So I try to brainstorm with them about any other, you know, as, we'll put you on our list. You know, we have this service and this service is available for all township residents. So we'll put you on a list, but in the meantime. a list. But in the meantime, while you're waiting on the list, please try this, try this, try this idea."
What, what do we do, or what do you do if you get a call from somebody that sounds especially vulnerable, or especially in need of assistance? Do, what do we do in that situation?
We just kind of had that situation last week, yeah, where someone kept calling and calling. You know, I, I, I got him on the phone and I just, he was already on the waitlist for Kenneth Young, but he, he wanted services faster. So I found some crisis kind of talk lines that he could access and gave him that information.
Right. Couple other things. Yeah, you already mentioned referral. I was surprised that the villages refer, do not refer as much to us as they, as, as, as you would think they would, particularly Mount Prospect with a social services organization that is a little bit more focused, doesn't have the breadth. I would think that they would see people that, particularly at their community center, that they, that there'd be referrals coming out of there, but there's really not?
We do. We do get referrals from there. I know they have their own social, you know, some social work staff, that I think, you know, if, if for some reason they can't work with them, then, then they'll refer to us.
And what about internally? We have that checklist we're now using, that social services, youth, I don't know if youth does, but you guys, adult family, the employment, the food pantry, have, is that working? Are you getting referrals internally between, are we communicating when I, when needs are identified that maybe one of the other departments can help?
Definitely. I've seen several of those forms from the therapist across my desk and I just walk them right over to, you know, Andrea, you know. But yes, that's, that's very helpful.
And how does, how does that work? So if social services sends some, something to you that says that these peoples appear to need counseling or would like counseling in some way or other, do we reach back out to them, or how does that work?
Oh, definitely. I think I, it's kind of, usually like Cory, for example. She speaks with someone who she thinks, you know, wants counseling services and they've identified that. She'll come to me directly and say, "This is what's going on with this person." And then I'll just call them back right away, you know.
And, and I guess in, in that regard, just a question there is, you know, we're, we're looking for an additional therapist. Is that going to meet, allow you at the current time to be able to more or less eliminate that waiting list, or not?
Let's see if we have, potentially, yes, with an additional person, yes, potentially. It would, it would-
If it wouldn't grow. I, I, if it's growing, then there's always increased demand.
Right.
But that would currently potentially meet the, potentially meet the demand?
Well, keeping, keeping current staff, you know, and then adding.
What is, what are each of your, I know you said the, the part-time therapist, is about six people, Spanish-speaking.
Right.
What, what is the normal caseload for each therapist?
So for her, it's, it's, it could be five.
Yeah.
Because she does need some time to do her notes, to make phone calls, you know, to consult with me. So a full-time therapist, you know, when I, I was on boarded, I was told anywhere from twelve to seventeen direct client service hours a week. And, and I have met with the program directors of other township counseling programs. And it's, it's pretty much right on target. Really, in the middle is where it should be. Fifteen is like ideal. Fifteen, when you consider the number of hours, you know, they work, it's a thirty-five-hour work week. When you consider that, when you consider some of the documentation requirements, that's, fifteen is kind of my target. You know, sometimes you have to schedule, you know, people always kind of cancel at the last minute. People get sick. I have, I have a cancellation rate. I know, I know what it is, and it's different for different therapists. So, you know, then I want to overschedule when I can predict that a certain percentage-
It's like the airlines. You know, it's like the airlines, you want to open your book.
Yes.
How are we, when you, how are, how is our program different than the others townships? Are, is there, are we different? Are we, are they all similar, or are there some that are, that are different in, in, in different ways?
I think we're not charging for services. Some of the other townships charge like five dollars a session sort of thing. So that, and that is one way we're different. The other way is we're open it, we've opened it up to adults. And adults who don't necessarily have like a child in their household. So that's different.
Other townships will just, won't, won't just see adults by themselves?
They will, as long as there is a, a child in the household.
And what do you, what do you, what's your feeling on whether there should be a fee or not? Is that, should, should there be a, a small fee for skin in the game, or is it, or do you feel that, you know, we made the decision to provide this for free, so that there, so there'd be no one afraid to come in? But is that, is that, what do you think about that?
You know, I wasn't here when fees were being charged on a sliding scale. What I was told is that the hassle, so to speak, of tracking all that and collecting money and, or, you know, charging, it was, it was not even worth it. I think as long as clients don't take advantage, and I'm making very sure they don't, by canceling multiple appointments in a row, you know, that's, that's the drawback. I mean, I worked once for an agency that they just charged for canceled appointments and, and nothing else. But I have a pretty strict policy that everyone has to sign, that if you're not going to come to your sessions, then we're not going to hold your slot open.
Another question is beyond just the therapy that we do, the work that you do therapy-wise for people coming in here, do, do you guys work with the, with Renee and the youth department to go into schools to teach the teachers, or to hold classes in terms of how to violence prevention, or dealing with kids with, I mean, I don't know. Is there, is there, or is that, or do you at this stage pretty well stick to the, to the, to the, to the therapy side and Renee has the other programs?
We have stuck to the therapy side because there's the need. I mean, we have a waiting list. We, you know, don't, it would be taking time away from that program to go into the, the schools. That's one issue. The other issue is that this program, it's an intervention program. We intervene in people's problems. Renee's programs are prevention. So the focus-
Which Renee is a little bit more of a, her, her approach is, I mean, their services are a little more prevention in terms of providing empowerment programs, providing training on bullying, things like that, which are, which are addressing, which are addressing in advance the issues rather than-
Correct.
-you're addressing once it has occurred.
Correct. And it's the same thing like, for example, with the other townships. Hanover Township, that counseling program, they, they separate youth services and counseling services, and they consider youth services prevention programs. The same thing with Maine Township. And the staff are different. Staff qualifications are different. And so, I mean, both are just vital programs. As far as seeing adults, I think it's absolutely necessary that we see adults, even without, we get a lot of adults who are having problems with their adult children who are living with them. So, I mean, these are adults who live, you know, in the township. They are, you know, taxpayers. They own houses. And, and they're having issues. Maybe they have an adult child who's, you know, divorced, come back, or substance abuse issues themselves. And to how to kind of manage all that.
The last thing is your, your goals are great. I think we got to constantly review and revise programs, operations, adjusting to whatever the, the current needs are and not become stuck in the past and no longer be relevant.
Right.
I, as I've said, I'd be very, and we've discussed, I'd be very supportive of continuing to add additional staff. And I think the, the board would too, from my discussions with them, since this is an area where we, we really have a core competency and really can provide, we really bring the value to the community here that others can't.
We really do.
So that's, that's something we should constantly be in discussion with, is how do we meet the demand? And then, yeah, I know that you've been working on the professional and clinical development side of your therapist. And I'd like you to get to the point where you could do more oversight and, and sure have a caseload, but not the type of caseload you have to carry right now.
Yeah, I've been carrying almost a full-time-
Yeah.
-caseload. I think one of the great things about the township programs, this program, other township counseling programs, is it eliminates a lot of the barriers for mental health treatment that other, like state-funded agencies such as Kenneth Young, or even Jocelyn Center, or Alexian Mental Health. Those are major state-funded mental health centers, and they're, they're incredible. I'm not, I'm not trying to down them, but there's a lot of like paperwork requirements that come along with it. And some clients find that as a real barrier to accessing services, whereas here, we're trying to keep, I'm trying to keep it simple in terms of the paperwork and requirements, but, and regulations. But I, I'm trying to keep it simple, but I need to make sure it's thorough as well.
I also think it's really great, the tracking tool. That's something we have not had, I mean, we track, but we really don't have a, 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 an effective system for tracking, which I think is really key to making sure, like you said, that our services are effective and that, and that we're, and that people are benefiting in the way we think they are.
Yeah, you've got to track success.
One other, one last question is, you know, there's more and more grants, state grants, other grants, federal grants that are out there. Is there, is there, would there be a reason, or is there an advantage to us maybe working with a, a firm or an individual to write up grant requests? Is, is there any value in that, or is that something you don't think we should get in the middle of?
I think there is one service that's, that's severely lacking. And I've talked to the supervisors of the other townships as well, and even the clinical director of the Jocelyn Center, and that is psych, psych neurotesting, psychological neurotesting. And that's a very important piece. So we do ADH screenings, but these other screenings are much more in-depth and, and can like nail down learning disabilities and specific diagnosis to where psychiatrists do feel comfortable prescribing some of the controlled substances, and some people need them. But they're requiring psych neurotesting, neuropsych testing, and that's a service that is lacking. So if there could be, in fact, one of the other program directors is thinking about like how to access like some kind of grant money through a networking organization to-
Now, is there, is there sometimes with the grant money, some of the issues are, for instance, I remember when I was a police and fire department, or commission for Mount Prospect, is you could get a grant to hire two police, more additional police officers, but after three years, that funding's gone, and then you're carrying, carrying the full load. Is-
Right.
So I guess that's one area that is, I mean, that's one reason to be a little careful. But that's something that I wouldn't mind talking about and then talking to the board about, if there is a value that, that it would bring to our ability to provide services, because there, there is, with mental health being in the forefront, starting, people are starting to look at what we've always done, that maybe there is an advantage to, because there's money out there. So.
I think it's worth it.
Our residents shouldn't benefit from that as well, too.
Definitely worth looking into to collaborate with some other community partners in the adventure, too.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
One other thing to note, George. I mean, out of that four percent that Mount Prospect is, is, is providing as a referral, you know, we're also split, is Wheeling Township.
Yeah.
You know, how much, how much of, of that, if they weren't doing it, would increase the four percent?
Yeah.
We don't know how much they're referring to the-
No, you don't. You don't know, yes, exactly. I mean, maybe the bulk of their, of their referrals are in the Wheeling Township. So I, we don't know that, yeah.
Plus, a lot of the kids who are referred from fifty-nine and two-fourteen school districts, the villages might also, the police in the villages might be working with those kids too. But they're getting the referral through the school.
Yeah.
That could be too.
And it's, and it's possible that, that people are just calling and, and they tried this person and, and maybe Mount Prospect did refer, but they didn't really like articulate that to me. Or maybe, you know, they just-
Yeah.
You know, said, "The, the school social worker wants me to find therapy," or something like that. Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. And I, like I've said, I think, you know, increasingly, social services and all that's involved with it is becoming more and more vital to the, to the, the stability and the, the strength of our communities. And like I said, I think what, what we provide in that regard, and what you provide in that regard is, is, is a competency and a service that is badly needed and is finally starting to get some attention in a broader sense. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Except, no. We don't, we don't need to accept the presentation, I think, no.
Okay. Thank you very much, Luann. And reports. So the assessor, she has a written report in here. If there's any questions, I might be able to answer them. But-
No, she's spot on.
Yeah. And, yeah, you guys all should be up, been getting your install, your current installment che- notices from-
Not a check.
No, not a check. Bill, invoice.
I can't believe the exemption forms are not going out till after April seventh.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's crazy.
That's what she said. Yeah, yeah. That's amazing. I just, yeah, anyway. So, I mean, we, we need to continue to make sure the residents realize that we provide a very, very unique service in terms of assisting with appeals.
We do, but we're, we're also up against what the county allows us to do.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can do that, we can submit the referrals, I mean, the appeals. We can, we can request exemptions. We can do all of that. But if the, if the, if the garbage in, I mean, not garbage, if we, if we're putting things in, but the, the systems aren't working properly, we're not going to get, we're going to get garbage out. Okay. And then clerk, report?
The only thing I have is one FOIA that was from February, requesting information about our employees, their position and department, their phone number, work phone number, and work email address. And Administrator Piac got that information to the requister.
Anything else? Any questions for the clerk?
No.
Okay. I, the supervisor's report. First of all, remind everyone to get their statement of economic interest completed and submitted. You should have gotten emails on that from the county.
We did, but is it, is it okay now? Because I remember-
I can't hear anything you guys are saying.
The statement of economic interest, that has to be in by, I think, May first or whatever.
Yeah, it's okay to do now, right? Yeah.
I've submitted my-
I thought the, your, your comment about the site being down again, that you had put out a, an email or something.
No, it's up now. It's, the site's up and you, because I just did it the other day.
Yeah, I, I don't remember that it was, the site was down. I mean, I, I think there was a delay or something, wasn't there? Maybe that was what it was. There was a delay in, in that. But, yeah, they're up. I, I've gotten emails from a bunch of people in the building and a couple of-
I've done it.
-elective officials, that they've done it already. So.
Yeah.
It's available.
Get it done tonight.
Okay. We, we, I did give you a little update on the current capital improvement program. The studs and the, and the plumbing in the bathroom are, 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 are in place. So the bathroom is moving along, the one for the, for the, for the challenge course and for the bike safety. They've, they've, obviously fleshed it out and they've, the plumbing now is in place. And we're moving forward. That should be done shortly. The bike safety room has been cleaned out and painted, and a new garage door has been placed on there. One negative development that occurred is, is we, as we, as we upgraded and, and improved the bathroom, the fire marshal and then the inspector that they utilize indicated that there's new regulations that have come into place since we, we, since we initiated this program and had our, our, our plans and permits all approved. Now, they say that all occupiable rooms- Now, they say that all occupiable rooms in the entire building need to have an audible strobe for, for fire purposes. So that means that we need to go back now and put audible strobes in places that we weren't required to have before. And there's some, some disagreement on what's, what's usable or not usable, you know? A big closet, can somebody really be in there and stay in there? So I, that still has to be worked out. But probably the cost of doing this is, um, is fifty thousand, uh, which is a very substantial amount of money.
They found that much?
Yes.
That, that many areas?
No, they're gonna, they're just, we have to redo the plans. We gotta, we gotta go and run wiring, new wiring, gotta do the analysis of whether the power, the power source is strong enough now or powerful enough to handle all the new stuff. There's engineering, there's, there's design work, there's installation, there's the equipment. This was a, a big surprise, and the fire marshal never said anything about it until we had the inspector come out, and then he rejected our plans. And we said, "Why?" And he said, "Because there's new regulations that require this in the Village of Elk Grove." So...
Oh, it's a village, okay.
Yeah, it's a village, a village ordinance. So, and it's...
And the, and the, and the fire marshal was not...
No, the fire marshal did not make us aware of it ahead of time. So, that is a, you know, we had big discussions with our contractors and with, uh, with our, the teams that are associated with this, what, what we'd need, the companies that we'd have to use to, to get this done. Um, and it became apparent to me that we really don't have a choice.
No, no.
We, we have to do it, and, um, and, you know, we could pay all at once, or we could pay, may possibly pay in, in installments, but my point is, we have the reserve, so we just pay it, get it done with, and not have to deal with this going forward. It is not slowing or delaying the rest of the construction project. It just, just has to be done for us to get final approval, so.
Okay.
All right, so that's, any questions on the construction? We, we hope that the actual bike safety and, um, and, um, challenge course will be able to start construction there, you know, with the demolition and the fence, the, you know, the fi, the, um, the, uh, the, uh, the work in terms of, of cleaning everything up and getting everything ready. And then actually, construction should, should start maybe in a, in a month, a month or two months, depending on the weather. We move on from there, then. Um, we're, we're working with Jason, our, our attorney, in regards to identifying who's, who actually owns the cemetery, um, as, on Arlen, Arlen Knights Road, is right when you come under, uh, under the, the tollway, um, to the left there. I know the Village of Elk Grove is interested in, um, in incorporating that. But right now, we really don't know exactly who owns that or doesn't own it. We have responsibility for the road that's there, but, you know, if, if they have property that abuts that road, the way the state law is now, it actually should be their road. And if that's the case, they could possibly just annex the cemetery if we do have it. So I, I, what we're trying to do right now is identify really who owns that and, and the road, and, and what the situation is, because it's kind of been left to sit in there. It's just been, been taken care of over the years, and, and, and it hasn't been really identified as to what really, whose responsibility is what. So we're trying to get that identified. The cemetery itself is running, is run by the, uh, the, uh, a, a group headed up by the Scheringhausen family, who has a lot of family members buried there. So they've been doing, as a private organization, they've been doing that, and it's been a great service they provide. But in terms of who actually is responsible ultimately for the cemetery and that road, we're trying to determine. One other area that we're trying to determine is Lindeman Road that goes into the rural fire district, uh, is, you know, south of, is that, is that Algonquin?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, south of Algonquin. It's a short stretch. It's in bad shape, because the Budweiser distributor's right there, and they, their trucks come out and beat the crap out of that, out of that road, and the fire, fire trucks go in and out of there. Once again, same type situation. There is no clear informa, I mean, information at this point as to who really owns that road. Once again, if Mount Prospect abuts it, then it should be their road. Uh, if they, if they don't abut it, it may be ours, and then, but, but we don't know. There's no real verification as, as to what, who actually, road that is. And we've had Connie and everything look at it, and it just isn't known, so we've gone to Jason to try to identify on that as well, too. The reason why that's important is that Mount Prospect Public Works wants us to go in and clean up and fix up that road, probably because they're taking over the rural fire district building at some point. That would be a hundred and twenty thousand is what they projected at. I'm, I, before I sit down and talk to them, I want to know for sure whose road that really is. We, we have, we accepted responsibility for plowing it, even though I wasn't sure whose it is or whose it isn't, because we historically have just done it. But we did a lot of things historically in the previous administrations that, that I'm finding were just done, and there's no real, there's no real information or verification as to whether this really, we should be doing it or not.
So the, the land that was annexed in where the, to Mount Prospect, where the, the old American Airlines, which is now going to be the Cloud HQ building?
United Airlines, yeah.
Yeah, United, yeah, where the, now the, the Cloud HQ's gonna be. Was, is that road?
No, that part, that part of Lindeman is, is theirs.
Okay.
So it's just when that Dick Hall, Dick Hall Lindeman part is the one where I need to look at one, what it's, what it's, how it's labeled, how it's, how it's identified in the county and in, 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 no, and how it's titled, so to speak. Um, and, and I, and that's what we're trying to identify. It hasn't been easy to do that, or with the cemetery. Then the second thing is, once I know who technically owns it right now, then I need to look at, okay, with state law that's out there, who should own it, and, and, and who should be taking care of it. Then at that point, we can make decisions and work with Elk Grove on the cemetery and Mount Prospect on the road. So before I move too, too, too much further on that, I, I want to make sure that I understand whether we own either of those or responsible for either of those.
See, I would think with regards to the cemetery, if the road is ours, and you have a piece of...
But it may not be ours. It may not suppose to be ours, yeah.
I'm saying if, 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 if the, if the road ends up being ours, I would be shocked if the land wasn't, because...
Right.
You'd landlock.
Right.
There'd be no way to, you know?
Right, right. But what, what could have happened here, too, is when state law changed, for instance, dirking, Elk Grove Village annexed one side of it, we're on the other side. Well, the way state law is now is they have the full road. Because they annexed up to it, the village now has the full road. If that's a similar situation, cemetery and that road, or with Lindeman and that road, then it, it, it doesn't matter how it's titled, but first, I want to see how it's titled, then deal with, from that perspective, and then work with the villages on, in some, a way to resolve this.
Okay.
Okay, um, the Social Services Review Committee, TOI came up with a format for those reports. For the report for the decennial, we will use that same format in general for our township reports that we do in the off-years, the years there's not a decennial report. Um, and I'm supposed to meet with Dick to walk through that, so that we're, we're on the, the same page as to how we want to use that format. Then he'll bring it to the committee and walk through it there.
It's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because you're kind of flying blind without it.
Oh, yeah. And, and then each township comes in with a different type of report, different information. This at least provides a structure that we can use for our township report and then for the decennial. And so the other thing I need is, we need another member. We had three members, one had stepped out, she was a social worker with Mount Prospect. We need to find a third member, and I need the board, and I need our staff to, to make recommendations to be in that regard, because I'd like to fill in.
A citizen?
Citizen, a resident of Mount Prospect. Uh, I... Resident of Elk Grove Township.
Yeah, I have somebody in mind.
Okay. Well, you can talk to me and Dale, if you have anyone, I'd like to hear it, too. And, um, so, because I, I'd like to get that person in to the committee before we go much further, before, so that they're, they're involved all the way through.
Yeah, the person I'm thinking of is a teacher.
And I, I, I'm not limited just to one more. The way our policy's written, it's for three, but I can add a fourth if I, if, you know, if there's somebody that really is, is, I think, is, is, would be advantageous. Um, only other couple things. One, Brush Pickup, we're reviewing that contract. Vince, you're aware of that, and hopefully we'll have that reviewed and something done before that actually begins for this year. We've been approached by a company that would like to do a project for the community. They approached us about perhaps building or providing funding to put a greenhouse in, in back that could be used by youth or seniors for, for growing vegetables and stuff for the food pantry. Cory's looking into that. Um, I, as I said before, the check-in referral forms are in, are in process now, and I think that's really good to make sure, not just verbal, not just where we're, let's say Cory tells Luanne, "Hey, I got somebody here," but actually, they, when somebody checks in, they give them that, say, "Is there other issues that we need to address with you that you would be interested in getting help on?" And so we have that, as well as through discussion. We also have that form that people can fill out, and maybe they're not aware of what else we have. Website, uh, there's gonna be a meeting with the, with Izzy and a couple of our staff with them, with her, with our company next week, and I've been kind of pushing to get that done and up, but it's, it's progressing. And finally, the Repolo signage. We've got now approval from the county to do, um, not a large part of it, a small part of it. And the village has some, and we have the other part, and we'll move ahead with ours this spring and just get it in. I was a little disappointed when they only allowed a couple of signs, but if that's what they allow, that's what they allow.
The county?
We've done what we can do, yeah, the county has to approve it. So we've got some signage that we'll put in, and I think we're gonna try to work with Elk Grove Village Public Works, we're gonna try to see if they will make the signs for us, and then we'll arrange someone to install them, because I think they have a sign shop.
Yes, they do.
I think they do, yeah, yeah. All right, is there anything else?
No.
Any questions for me? No? Okay. Then the, is there a, a motion to approve the elected official?
So moved.
Second?
Okay.
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussi?
Aye.
All right, there's no correspondence, uh, there's no old business. Under new business, we have the bid opening for the new twenty-four passenger bus. So if the clerk would open the bid or bids, um...
I have one bid from Best Bus Sales that was received on March twenty-third, and I Okay, the bid is for a two thousand twenty-two Ford F- five-fifty sixteen plus three or twenty-four passenger bus. I'm looking for the amount. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find... Okay, the total cost is a hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. And all of the, um, details of the options and everything are here.
Okay, this bus will, well, in, in, in all, for all purposes, replace the, the older bus we have. How, how many seats does the older bus have?
Same, same size.
Twenty-four seats.
Twenty-four passengers.
Passengers. It is, it is structured in a way that, that is no longer really needed or appropriate for our needs. And, um, the prob, the only negative is, is we really, there's no trade-in value for it that we know. We, we try to see if there's a trade-in value, but nobody's, nobody's really interested in it, so we'll continue to pursue that to see if there's...
So the existing older bus would then just be sold outright?
Yeah, it'd be sold, or I don't know what we'd do if no one wants to buy it.
Well, why don't you auction it off?
Pardon?
Why don't we auction it off?
Off?
What's that?
And he was saying, "Why don't we auction off that, the old bus if we, if we don't need it anymore?" I mean, we, they didn't...
We can't, we won't get anything for it.
There was no trade-in, and there is no, um...
I won't take it if it's traded.
Yeah.
I can't imagine somebody wouldn't, at an auction, it wouldn't, I mean, when you say you won't get anything for it, I can't imagine that somebody's not gonna take a functioning, running bus and not, not give something.
Okay, well, then, it's, it's, let's just say, if we get anything, it won't be very much.
Okay.
It's, it's been told to us by this company who we bought the other two buses from, and we talked to them about the trade-in. We don't want it, it's not worth anything. It was especially built, bus, township bought it many years ago. And it's, every time we have to do something to it, it costs us a lot of money to repair it, so. Um, it just depends on, you know, somebody would take it and turn it into a camper or whatever, yeah, we can get something out of it, but...
No, I was thinking...
If it's not worth the effort, I mean, I think we're just gonna have a lot of money in trying to sell.
I was thinking more along the lines of these other types of bus companies that, you know, take hockey teams or sports teams to places, or, you know, bus companies that take people downtown on, you know? I was thinking something like that, if, especially if it's in good running order.
It's not really... Uh, what, what, um, what we can do is, um, you brought back those two companies from TOI.
Right.
And what, we talked to both of them, so, um, we have one that we can work with that is a lot, would be a lot easier and a lot less, um, chaotic.
If they'll, if they'll even take it, even if they're even willing to take it, to auction it off. I mean, I don't know if...
Well, they, yeah, it, it doesn't go anyplace to auction. You just, all you do is create pictures and provide information, and they upload it, and then they have it on their site as being auctioned.
And this is the group we were thinking of using to, for the, for the other surplus equipment?
Right, yeah. You put in what your minimum bid is, and so you're not stuck. In, in case you just put it out there, there's another site, you just put it out there, and whatever the final bid is at the end of the auction time, that's what you get, whether it's a hundred dollars or a hundred thousand dollars. This one, you can set a minimum bid price, so you know you're gonna at least get X dollars. And that's who we'll go to. I mean, we've had other equipment that we have categorized as...
They declared a surplus already, yeah.
Surplus, yeah, so we're gonna do that with them, those various items, we're only a few items that...
I, I, I agree, Vince, that it, that it, you might as, we might as well, I mean, if we're putting this other stuff, if we're putting the other surplus items up for, for bid or auction, why not just add that? And who cares?
Well, it's better than taking it in a junkyard, salvage yard.
Yeah, if we declare it, we declare it, do we, have we, we need to declare that a surplus, too, the bus?
I believe we already did.
Did we? I don't remember declaring it, but, but maybe we did.
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay.
I think that was our, one of the reasons.
All right, well, let's, let's double check. I know we did the trailer and, you know, the chipper and all that, but I didn't know if we did the bus.
Yeah, I'll double check, but I think we did.
Okay.
How many, how many, um, bids are required? It's on...
Could be just one.
Is this the same company we bought from before?
Yeah.
Okay.
How come there's only one guy that always bids?
Because we put on, we have special requirements, we acquire for this bus, and he seems to be the only one that's willing to, to, to buy, develop...
Fabricate?
Put, put together a bus with all those, all those requirements. Nobody, nobody else is, nobody else seems to be willing to, to, to go to that much, that much customer, customization.
Okay.
So, unfor, unfortunately, we only have, well, fortunately, we have somebody that does it.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, it's only, only one. So what I would like to get here is a, is a motion to accept the bid pending attorney review. With all these, this will go to the attorney for his review to make sure it meets the, the bid, um, the bid, uh, requirements, and also is legally put together in a proper legal fashion. So if somebody would make a... So if somebody would make a.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Roll call?
Trustee Nierdowski?
Aye.
Trustee Dante?
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie?
Aye. And if, just by some chance, another one happens to come in?
It's too late.
Too late, yeah.
Four o'clock today was the cutoff.
Yeah. Once, we have to, we have to do that.
No, I understand why.
Law requires it.
I understand why.
But also, too, it would be unfair to, because now somebody knows what somebody bid.
Mm-hmm.
And they would be able to now to try to underbid them by, by $1,000 or so. But, but, and you don't have, just so you got, we don't have to take the lowest bid. It has to be the lowest reasonable bid. And, 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 but you, normally, that's the lowest. I mean, it's the lowest reasonable bid that meets the legal requirements.
Criteria, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right, so that's, that's been approved. Is there, that's the only new business? Is there any discussion or comments from trustees? Any guys want to, any of you guys want to raise anything or address anything?
No.
Okay.